A call to order this February the 6th, 2019, meeting of the Franklin County Commission. Roll call.
Commissioner Stottermeyer.
Present.
Commissioner Waymeyer.
Present.
Chair Howard.
Present.
Vice Chair Dickinson.
Present.
Commissioner Dunn.
Present. You all join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, remain standing for the invocation, please.
I do have any father, we again come before you, just humbled to be given this position of leadership, just help us as we consider the issues of the county, just help us to be wise with our words, wise with our thoughts, wise with our decisions, wise with the spending of the county's money, just be, have us, let us, our ears be open to the words of our constituents, just be with each one today, amen.
Thank you. Okay, it takes us to correspondence and organizational business, Derek?
Nothing today.
Have anyone signed up for public comment?
Sir.
Say yes.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, a citizen desiring to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so at this time, discussion is limited to five minutes and the commission will not take action or discuss items at this time, discussion should be limited to matters of county commission business and public comment is not permitted in regard to personnel matters or impending legal matters, items introduced under public comment may become agenda items at a later date.
Brian Webster, 1108 Hawthorne Road. Good morning. Congratulations, welcome aboard, Don, Ian Dickinson, same, the reason I'm here is to express my gratitude to our road superintendent, Dave Lee, in acknowledging that I have some difficulties in the right of way and he's focused his attention on helping me. Thank you, sir. Thank you, commissioners. Hope everybody's having a good day.
Thank you.
Norman Woogie, 3790 Pawnee Road, Ottawa, Kansas. We've got a full house, it's kind of surprised me this morning, four kings and a, four kings and a queen. Oh, well, so much for that. It would be an asset to all of you if you draw from our new county attorney, Brandon, he has a lot of expertise, he's on the school board and can advise you well on the open meeting rules. The school board was very careful to notify me of the meetings by the Kansas Open Meetings Act, and went beyond the rules and made me feel very confident and comfortable. They, I really appreciated all they did, they went out beyond, not always in agreement, but satisfied with the organization, once again, much of you, much can be gained by our new county attorney's knowledge and wisdom.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, it takes us to the consent agenda, items today on the consent agenda need approved, there's no claim vouchers, tax change orders in amount of a minus $5,380.72, and the minutes from the February, the, excuse me, January the 30th commission meeting, the last, stay session, they're not there yet.
Oh, Dustin didn't put that on there, you guys have them, if you would like to add that, you can.
Okay, also, we'll add the study session from February the 4th, minutes.
That'll be available online, if anybody wants to review it. I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Have a motions or a second?
Second.
Motion is second.
Commissioner Stottermeyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Staying from the study session, yes, on the rest.
Chair Howard.
Yes. Okay, our first item of business is approval of zoning application 1812-1639 to rezone approximately five acres from an A1 agricultural zoning district to an RE residential estate zoning district, Larry?
As you've indicated, Mr. Chairman, this is a request to rezone five acres from an approximate 78 acre tract, the remainder of that would still be retained in the A1 agricultural zoning district, the purpose for the rezoning is to divide out the existing residents with the outbuildings for sale, the, like I said, the remainder, that will be retained for agricultural purposes. I think the aerial photo, this part of your staff report depicts the boundaries very well, and you can see that this is located on the north side of 68 Highway, just east of Georgia Road, the planning commission has forwarded a recommendation to the county commissioners to adopt a resolution approving this rezoning request and to direct staff to amend the countywide zoning map accordingly. I really have nothing further to add unless any of you have questions.
Pretty, pretty cut and dried, pretty normal thing that we do, so if there's no questions, we look for a motion to approve rezoning application 1812-1639.
Motion to approve.
Motion, second.
Second.
Motion is second.
Commissioner Waymeyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Stottermeyer.
Yes.
Chair Howard.
Yes. Okay, second item was to approve the health department fourth quarter financial report, I don't see Midge, okay, we'll go back to that if Midge gets here before we're finished. Item number three, consider approving soliciting bids for tires, David?
We've, we do a monthly tire inventory and this, my understanding, this is pretty routine, a couple of times a year, as we use tires and get low on inventory, we come to you looking to go out for bids for tires, and so that's what, what this is.
But putting them on consent agenda, if you want to put them there, we don't have to.
Okay.
Unless it's something really extraordinary, but.
And at this time, we're not approving it, we're just saying, go out and get it, so I would make a motion to approve the solicitation of bids for tires.
Second.
Motion is second.
Commissioner Dickinson.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Stottermeyer.
Yeah.
Commissioner Waymeyer. Chair Howard.
Okay, item four, discuss and prioritize county facility maintenance needs, Derek?
Yeah, on Monday, we took a facilities tour and you, while we didn't hit all of the county facilities, we hit all of them that we feel like had some maintenance needs. Brandon put together a spreadsheet that I believe you all have in front of you, he's also prepared a recommendation on, I asked him to prepare the, kind of the three things that he felt were most urgent, and he's done that, before I get into that, I will tell you that Janet and I have a meeting with our financial advisor tomorrow, the purpose of the meeting is to, we're in the process of trying to create kind of a longer term financial plan, and we want to talk to him about some of our debt and how much of it is callable, where we want to stay in terms of reserves to keep our bond rating where it's at and kind of continue our goal of moving forward, and so, I say all of that to say, as I sit here, I don't know exactly how much that I am comfortable recommending that we spend out of our reserve fund to do this, you know, I think we'll make some recommendations, and I think certainly there is an amount that I'm comfortable with, but how high that goes, I'm not sure yet, and so, Brandon has recommended the annex parking lot, just, we all saw the condition of that, it's in very bad shape, we think that'll be approximately $20,000.
I have a question on that, the parking lot, so that, is that, is that just to re, put the new pipe in, I mean, obviously, you're going to, you know, be tearing up park, part of the parking lot to do that, is that, does that include the parking lot repair, or is that just to put in the new line?
This would be just for the drainage.
So we would, we would need to be considering that there also would be some additional cost to.
That would be for them to dig up and to remove the existing line, put in a new 12-inch line, and then get everything back to to normal.
So they would, would they re-asphalt, were they?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
That would be included in the $20,000 cost. We, I had Janet look up the balances in our respective funds, our annex fund has 225,000 in it currently, so certainly, we, we feel like we're in a position there that this is an expense we could pay for out of that fund, and I don't know, have you looked at kind of where the, the fund is heading, Janet, where it was, I don't know what you have with you today, but.
I believe it decreased slightly last year, but we're talking about renting some additional space to ransom memorial hospitals, so, and we hope to, to bring you kind of a in-depth look at these fund balances at your retreat, so that will be coming, but I believe it was slightly higher last year.
Yeah, one of our goals at the retreat, and I don't want to bounce too far all over the place here, but we're going to have a, you know, a five-year history of all these funds, so we can see what direction they're trending, suffice to say, I don't think the annex fund is in danger of being depleted, I mean, most of our stuff around here is in good shape, our roof's in good shape, our HVAC units are in good shape, so.
I will say, I think that's part of the reason that there was that slight decline, because we did some roofing repairs, we did some AC stuff, so there were some things done.
What is our payment a year to the U.N. Center?
Let me look it up for you.
While she's looking that up, I will tell you, the, the next thing, next recommendation Brandon had was the clock tower supports in the courthouse, you will recall being up there, and we can see the, the water damage, and I certainly don't want to speak for him, but I think the urgency there has to do with the fact that it is a structural support for a, frankly, a pretty heavy clock tower, we think that cost will be approximately $2,400, and that is an expense that would be eligible for transient guest tax funds if you chose to do that, our TGT balance is currently $183,000, and we think that that's, that's heading north, because our collections are, are good right now, and so, that, that fund can handle that, and then.
When does that usually come in for that fund?
Quarterly.
Comes in quarterly?
Yep.
And then the third.
And we have not received our first payment yet, we should, no, well, we might, we might see it yet, probably in February, early February.
So that should be going up a little bit?
Mm-hmm.
And do you have that number, Janet?
What number?
That Don asked for?
I'm getting to it.
Okay, and then the, the, the third recommendation was the district court HVAC system, obviously, that's in pretty bad shape, we, we lose that, then we lose air conditioning to the courthouse, the district court clerk's office, we're in a bad place there, we, we think that's going to be around $70,000, that would need to be ad valorem tax dollars, but our capital improvement fund has ample funds to cover that, and so, having said that, we've also got the jail HVAC that we've already agreed to do, and we have not spent any money on that yet, and so that's an additional, what?
Seventy thousand.
Seventy thousand for that unit as well, the other thing I would bring to your attention is, was it two budget years ago, I think Jeff could tell us, but we asked Jeff to reduce his staffing, and we told him that if he did that, we would take that money from that position and set it aside, and we would use it on his buildings, we have done that, and it's sitting there, that is something that I think could, could wipe out his detox, like that, we saw those, those are in pretty bad shape, we have those funds set aside specifically for his facilities, so I would be comfortable recommending that as well, I don't know how much over, you know, I want to hear what your thoughts are, I think we could do everything that we've kind of just said, and not have to worry about sacrificing our goals or our bond rating, going much above that, though, I would probably want to talk with our financial advisor first, so now that that's been said, what, what do you all feel, these are just recommendations, and this is very much a decision that I would like the board to make, so.
What's the capital fund or building, I mean, our capital funds, I guess, probably are eligible for a lot of these costs, what's the balance?
Capital equipment is just right at a million dollars, and capital improvement is 1,343,000. If, if you'll recall, though, we've been trying to trend those upwards, though, so we could improve our bond rating, so.
And.
As I remember, we're at the kind of benchmark that initially they said was healthy, I guess, they wanted to see.
That's definitely something we're going to talk to, to David Arterberry about tomorrow, about what, what percent of reserves we need to have to cover our expenditures.
What amount of revenue did we deposit in last year, how much did they go?
Between the two of those, from county general, 165, 165,000.
That is cash carryover, they got, moved to it at the end of the year?
Mm-hmm.
What did we budget?
No, that was from, sorry, that was from county building, we, we budget that in county building, and we don't budget it to, to use, like, in the general fund or anything, and then Public Works is currently putting $50,000 a year in there also, for projects that they may want to do.
In 19, in addition to that 165, we're budgeted to have an additional, like, 313, so between the two, about $480,000 were scheduled to transfer, that 313 isn't allocated yet, so I don't know that, we'll obviously talk to the board, I don't know if we'll transfer that to equipment reserve or capital improvement, but, or some combination of both, and we're hoping, in addition to that, with where our valuations are heading in the 20-year, that we'll be able to increase that amount, so, say all that to say, financially, I, I think things are pretty bright, but I also, we know that this is cyclical, and we know that it won't always be that way, so what we are viewing as our challenge, Janet and I are, we want to, to set this organization up in a way that's sustainable, and so, I don't just want to blow through all of this now, and then be in a situation here in five years where we're just, and so, we're trying to work with our experts, the David Arterberrys, to, to come up with that plan, but, but with all that being said, I think, you know, we have some room now to knock out a lot of these needs, we just need to know what your priorities are.
Don, to answer your question, we paid two, just over 295,000 on the juvenile detention center bonds last year, that was principal and interest, it looks like the principal amount was 175.
You went over a handful of expenses that could kind of logically be pulled out of places other than our capital fund, I think that's the easiest way to approach it, is kind of take those out first and then see what's left to add to that, I would think that the EMS door replacement, that could come out of Nick's, he's got a good capital equipment, and his equipment's in good shape, fund, the lift station at Public Works, I mean, again, they have pretty good equipment right now, I would think that it would be a logical expense for their equipment replacement fund, being as it's a mechanical piece, you know, that goes wrong, and unless there's an urgent equipment need that I'm unaware about there, I think we'd like to look at, at maybe run of that through their equipment replacement fund.
So really, only the air conditioning at the district court is the only thing you're talking about coming out of our specific funding for, because the other can come out of the jail, the, what we had put by the reserve, and the.
That's a great question, Ian, and the, the money that we've set aside for the sheriff is general fund, I mean, it's ad valorem money, but it has been set aside, and.
Do you have an engineer's estimate yet, looking at the annex fund, on the, his architectural estimate, did he give one when he drew up the plans on the potential office remodel?
Well, we, we got one from one contractor, that was around 100,000, but both Brandon and I, in our obviously lay opinion, think that's high, and that's a contractor that's came in high on other stuff, so I don't.
Sometimes the architect will do an architect's estimate, just basically based on this many square feet, the average.
He just said $50 an hour, but he didn't, he didn't give an estimate on how much, how much time you would have to, you know, have to put together, anything, is that what you're?
No, I think.
Sometimes, like, there's an engineer's estimate or an architect's estimate, but basically, the architect would say for a tenant finish on a commercial building, the average cost is $40 a square foot, something like that, you have 1,000 square feet, so roughly 40,000, you know, that, it would be something kind of cursory like that, but, like we had on our roads out the industrial park, they said, however many million, and it came in under that, but.
Yeah.
They do give you, you know.
Yeah, yeah, well, I, we will, we'll certainly, I mean, that's an item I wanted to discuss at the retreat as well, so we'll have a number, hopefully by then, some ballpark, but that is what we've heard so far, is around 100, so.
I see in the balance there, I guess, whether to circle back and, and think about on the annex, the fire panel alarm replacement, would kind of depend on what.
He thought that might be fixable, not having to be replaced, so I think until we know for sure.
Okay.
I did appreciate the tour of the properties that we own, and, and, and definitely, the parking lot situation probably would be number one, and if you, anybody looks at the air conditioners, yes, I think they need to be replaced, and I don't know, one of my concern is, because they're on the ground, you know, people come and steal things, and they're very accessible there, you know, we need to make sure to, whatever we need to do there, but definitely, the other thing that I wondered about, a question wise, because we talked about it a lot, was this, the roof at the jail, and, and I know it's a high priority, but, but at this point, we're not discussing it, so I didn't know if that was maybe a higher priority than the detox ceilings, I don't know, you know, or if that's something else that we can consider at this time, that's another one of those things, you don't want to wait too long or have something happen, and then go, oh, wow, yeah, we should have done that.
And we have the sheriff here, and Jeff, if you want to come up, I, obviously, what your thoughts are on your facilities are very, I think, critical, so what are you, between the jail roofs and the detox, what are your thoughts?
I do the operational part of the jail, so for me, from an operational aspect, those detox cells are, are, that is my priority, Brandon takes care of that facility, I understand that we don't want our facility rotten, because all the water is getting in there, but I don't, I cannot make an assessment on that, I believe that the facilities director probably has got a better idea on that than I would, but I can tell you, from an operational standpoint, our number one concern at this point in there is our detox, is our detox cells, the ceilings and the walls in there, so, I hope that helps, and I'm not trying to throw you under the bus, Brandon, but I think you've got a better.
Well, and, and if we took funds from you, and we're going to use it for your facility, then the detox, I mean, if we were to use those funds, then really detox ceiling, you know, those funds we set aside, it makes more sense to use it for that.
Well, the, how that, the funding on that and all that, that's, that's a board's decision, that's not, that's not on me, but operationally, that's where, that's where I'm at, but again, I don't have all the information on that, on that roof, so.
And the other, only other thing I would like to make a priority, and I've talked to Derek about this, and we didn't go to that building, is this parking lot at the recycling center where, and, and, and there are a lot of people that go there, and I don't know if there's been gra, just gravel, you know, just to make it so it's not a muddy morass when there's any kind of moisture on there, but anyway, that would be, yeah.
And I don't, I don't know, David, if that, I mean, is that something your guys can throw some gravel down, I don't know that that's necessarily a huge expense, but maybe it is.
We have already discussed, basically ripping up, there, there's patches of asphalt and some of that, when, when weather permits this summer, we're going to scarify that and, and create a good gravel base, long-term, I have some other, other ideas, I'm not prepared to really talk about those now.
At least the section that the public uses, you know, because it is just.
Yeah, no, we, we've, we've discussed it in two of our staff meetings already, and so it's, it's something that is of concern to us for the very reasons that you're, you're talking about, so we're, we are going to be looking into that and make some improvements to it.
Say you're meeting with Rodney tomorrow?
Not Rodney, David Arterberry, yeah, Commissioner Stottermeyer, what do you?
Yeah, I, you know, I've been listening to other recommendations that Colt had there, and, and every one of you guys come up with is, seems like a really valid, I mean, it comes down to the choice thing, it doesn't come down to what, that all needs to be done, you know, and I guess at this time, we just have to put our priorities on what comes first, you know, and maybe we don't know what's one's going to wear out the first, we just have to use the best of our knowledge of what we need to do and have to do, only one thing I might bring up this time, I, I know I've harped on this before, so, I figured maybe I better educate myself before I say anymore, and Ian brought it up, and we was at the courthouse the other day, if there's anything out there, to help us pay for anything to be done to the courthouse, so, to educate myself, I went back through and I contacted the Heritage Trust Fund, and there was 20 entities awarded the grant this year, one of them was in Ottawa, in fact, and the biggest money put out was on a courthouse in Kansas, and they told me that, and I asked them why, and they said, well, courthouse is our biggest priority when it comes to historical funding, and it was in Kingman County, I contacted Kingman County, talked to a person down there, and said, the, the grant was done in-house by, I won't even say who, it was by elected official in Kingman County did the grant, and, and, and the Historical Society provides two or three classes in the summer, she told me, to train people what they want to see in the grant, and how to do the grant, and so, and I talked to Sue, which is interesting, because right here it is, she still puts in around average of $15,000 a year into that Heritage Fund, and so she's put in close to $300,000 into that fund, which I understand, we drawed money back already, we've collected on three times, but hardly any of these on the list are county buildings, almost all of them have been, I don't know whether there's not that many county asking, I don't know that answer, but the biggest one on there is Kingman County Courthouse, and, and a bunch of, they run all the way from as little as $7,000, clear up to 90,000, there was two 90s, one was in Atchison, I don't know what kind of building it was, and the other one was in Kingman on their courthouse, so, I know it is, and it's, it's not, they get, they told me, and Sue kind of mentioned it too, that the funding that they get has not dropped in 20 years, I mean, you know, so, but I don't know how many grants they issue every year, they give out 883,000 in grants last year.
How much did they give to the courthouse, and what was the project?
90,000, restoration of the courthouse, I didn't go into detail, all, you know, ours would be a variety of a dozen different things, so, all they told me, I didn't really get into, I didn't have to know the details, but I know it was, it was a restoration of the, of the old courthouse.
Yeah, and, and.
I believe they only award those funds one time a year.
Yes.
And so, you have, so we would have to apply this year, so we would not be able to do any repairs.
Right, for next year, right, well, I know, because none of that's on the list, except for the clock tower, and it would need to be added, but there's another thing, they would explain to me. Well, I noticed because none of it's on the list except for the clock tower, and it would need to be added, but there's another thing they would explain to me. Even though you start before you're granted, yes or no, but if you happen to say, I can't wait, you know, we're starting, you can still apply as long as you document everything with pictures and documentation and bills and, and everything, you still are eligible then if you get to go back, but you have to be close documentation to, to be up.
And, and I do believe that is the case, Dawn, and, and I'm glad you brought that up because we looked into it as well, and I do think it's a viable option. I think we have so many projects that may very well be eligible at the old courthouse that the thought was, you know, for a twenty-four hundred dollar courthouse repair, we weren't, we weren't prepared to bring it today, but when we start talking about the exterior painting, the stuff that could be a couple hundred thousand, that's something that we're absolutely intending to, we'll look at heritage, and we've got a couple other options that we're, we're thinking may yield some fruit, and so...
Tax credits was another one they mentioned, and they do offer classes on the tax credits also, and that's where actually the lady that runs all that, I talked to her protege, that's where she was at with teaching a class in, in the tax credit.
So we're, um...
Hopefully not.
What guidance have you received, so for what, what have you, what have you heard from us?
Well, I, I still need to hear from Commissioner Howard and Commissioner Dunn to see what their thoughts are, and then I can kind of recap what I think is, what are your thoughts on this?
Well, I kind of agree with what everybody else is saying, you know, I was kind of thinking, meet with, uh, David and see what, what he says, and give us part of that report the next time. As far as the prioritizing, I mean, that's kind of a different way of looking at it because of the different funds that we're able to use, maybe this parking lot's not the, would be high priority, but the funds are there to take care of that, you know, so I don't know that it's totally prioritizing, you know, if the funds are available from one place to take care of something like that, use them and get that done, and then try to prioritize where we're having to get into different money.
And I think that's kind of what Colt indicated, and so we've, we've got the annex drain and the annex fund to take care of that, the clock tower, we have the TGT fund, the EMS door, we have NICS fund, the public work lift station, we have the Public Works Equipment Fund, and that just leaves the, the district court HVAC and the, the detox cells, that would be general ad valorem dollars, but you're, you know, you're, you're under a hundred thousand there with just those two, so.
And it's not that we can't do anything else this year, that just means that those are the things that we feel if there's a priority, yes, let's get those done, and then, then, and then, and then see where we are.
Yeah, I mean, off the cuff, that is how I feel, yes. If I hear something different tomorrow, I would come back and report it to the board, but I, I think that we would be just fine.
I think, I'd be interested to see what he says after looking over and what he thinks, uh, would be the best way to take it out of, of which fund, or maybe move it or something.
Which HVAC on the courthouse is that, that's the east one that you say is priority? Is the west one newer, or just?
No, um, the east one, I don't think it's any newer. The, the east one, we've had a lot of repairs on.
Okay.
It's just the one that we've had the most trouble with, so.
Would we potentially maybe put together, I mean, this being about a hundred thousand dollars or under a hundred thousand being our, I guess, core one? Could we, uh, maybe add a second, uh, wish list or fleet, like, I mean, that's still under a hundred thousand. Like add this west AC is what I would add, a few other things, and then, you know, if you get to talk to Derek, uh, David Artaberry, and he says, no, that's within kind of range of what's comfortable, and you're comfortable with it, then we could maybe add our second option to it also.
You can absolutely do that, and we can also come back, I mean, we can have this discussion pretty easily anytime. I mean, I, I'm happy to take a second kind of fleet of requests today. Um, it, it's however you want to do it, but we...
My only thought sometimes if you say, well, there's another hundred thousand we can comfortably spend, you look for things that fit in a hundred thousand dollar box, you don't step back and say, all right, you know, grand total, two hundred thousand, what's the most important? Sometimes you look for...
Sure.
I don't know, Eric, new thing you, I was here when it went out one time, and it happened on a weekend, had to happen on a weekend, and then you're, you're done then, you just got to go order, you, there ain't no bidding or nothing to it. So, I'd lots rather see it up and snuff and doing good now, because I can remember when it happened before, it was, and you didn't have no choice. I mean, you know, you had to do it, you know, wasn't waiting around or taking bids or, just had to happen.
We didn't go through the basement on the district court. Is there a court down there in the old law, law library, or there is, they do hold court there?
Yep, they do.
The fire panel replacement for this building, how, where you feel that that needs to be on the list?
We're still waiting to see if we can have the, uh, issues that we're having now repaired. If we can have that repaired, then that would push that down the list a little bit, um, if we've got everything working, but I haven't heard yet, um, haven't been back out to, to look at this.
If there, if we do any remodeling in this building, would that affect that at all? Would that, any of that stuff be moved or anything? I mean, I guess I'm going to, if we're talking about remodeling some of this building, should this be something we stay away from until we do all of that, or not?
I'm not sure what the, what our requirements are on a remodel as far as bringing that new space up to current code, if we need to have extra, uh, uh, fire protection in that area. If we do, then it would impact this some. I'm not sure how yet, but it, it could impact whether we even have the capability of expanding the system that we have right now. We may find that we are not able to do that, we'd be forced into replacing it, but I don't know that for sure at this point.
I mean, I guess I'd hate to see us spend money to replace some of that, work on that, and then remodel, and then realize we got to replace the whole thing or something.
Your intent on the third floor windows on the jails to redo that house, is that what I gathered from you on the tour?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we can, we can use the list or something, and we should be able to get that on our own.
All right. Well, if it allows, I'd like to try and grab that other, uh, district court AC, at least the two upstairs ones. Ideally, the basement too, but then you're getting a pretty good number. Uh, maybe bid it as an option. I do think there's going to be an economy of scale, and they're large units, you're going to have to set them probably with a crane or at least some kind of equipment off the truck, you know, one rental on that, there's just going to be an economy of scale of being here once to replace them, so I'd like to see what, what that is, especially since we received, uh, such a surprisingly good bid on the last HVAC replacement on the, uh, just across the parking lot on the jail, so.
We didn't get to the historical side of the museum. Is there going to be anything in that building that is going to be, that's not on the list, and we didn't tour yesterday, so do you know of anything major over there?
No, I don't, and we've...
Replaced the air conditioners.
Say, we've, we've put a lot of county funds into, yeah, into that building, so I don't, I don't anticipate there...
Record Center?
No, the...
Old Depot.
Oh, Depot.
I think, uh, those railings down their courthouse, that, that's, that's a safety concern of mine, because every time I go up there, half of them are rusted off, and you don't know whether if you're going to use the rail, you're going to fall off the steps.
Sure.
Also out here in the annex parking lot, uh, you know, just coming in the parking lot, the transition from Main Street to the turn lane, it's, it's all potholed and, and it's hard to get in here, broken curbs, and then you get in here, of course, uh, it looks like it needs to be sealed or, or something, the parking lot, and of course, restriped. We're doing that, uh, drainage repair, looks like that'd be a good time to...
Sure.
That's completed, look at, uh, maybe to seal it, not restrip, or not resurface it, to seal it and, and fix some of the curb in this broken there along Main Street and, and those things, it's, uh, make it look a lot better coming in here.
Sure. Okay, that's very good.
Okay.
The other thing we didn't talk about, so the west side of the courthouse, and if it's sinking, or, or what's, what's going on there?
I think the reason that's kind of fallen down the list is we've had engineers tell us that it's not going to get any worse, and so it just kind of is what it is, and it's not ideal, but it doesn't, you know, I, I, it's not a safety thing really, it's just kind of an aesthetic, um, it's a little embarrassing and kind of an aesthetic issue maybe, but in terms of any danger or inefficiency, I don't know that it's, but it's something that, you know, we'll keep talking about for sure, but I think, in talking with the court administrator over there, you know, I think their HVAC is certainly something that, you know, you get those big jury trials scheduled, and if I recall, during the flat trial here a couple years ago, we had a massive HVAC issue, worst possible time, and it just, we're trying to avoid something like that again, so.
And on the record center on the gutters, you, it says basically we'll attempt to patch ourselves, so.
Yeah, so some of the seams have just been over, so it's just been, got pinhole leaks in it, just kind of all over the place. But, uh, hoping that we can maybe put some sheet metal in there ourselves and kind of just get it at least towards four feet properly.
New gutters all the way around that shouldn't be that expensive, would it?
Gutters are fairly cheap.
It was, um, we had a, we had a bid a while back when they were repairing the roof from when a tree fell on that, and at the time, they said about five grand they could do all the gutters all the way around.
Anybody else have anything?
I think, I think the last thing I would say, and we'll, we'll talk more about this at the retreat, but I, I want to be, I think what we're trying, the direction that Janet and I are trying to take the county in, it's a new philosophy. I mean, I, we see these fund amounts, and I think just taking into consideration where the county's been, it's easy to look at and say, oh, wow, there's two point three million dollars in there, like we were flush, but that is not the case, and I think I'm going to ask the board that we, you know, we keep that in mind, that we, you know, we're trying to build for long-term sustainability, and a part of that is repairing our facilities, but there is also a component of keeping a healthy reserve, but then that's, you know, I know you're getting into, to policy things there, so we're going to defer to the board, but I would encourage you to keep that in mind, that debt payoff, long-term sustainability are, I, I think admirable goals, so.
Well, I think that when it comes to our buildings, you know, we still have things to, to fix, and you're always going to have things to fix, but I think we've come a long ways, because I know when I first came on here, we were looking at several roofs that were leaking and had things that were pretty much, uh, really serious, and we've got a lot of those taken care of and repaired. I mean, all this stuff, I mean, the jail has some, deals with their ceiling and so forth, but overall, most of our roofs on these buildings are in pretty good shape now, and, and, uh, things could really damage them quick. I think we've got taken care of now, we just started fixing the, the other things, I think we're going in the right direction.
You know, I, I just imagine, uh, a, a future where, you know, we have an A-plus bond rating, you know, and the next grade would be a double A minus. I think we can get to a double A bond rating pretty easily, which would, I think, have a very palpable effect on our interest rates, and that is if we would even have to borrow. I mean, you look at some of these counties and their debt-free, I think, well, how great would that be? Because then you're so much less reliant on the mill, and I think that's kind of what we're looking at and trying to build towards, and that is a, I mean, that's a decade-long goal, but we've got to start kind of, if that is a, a vision that you all share, that's something we've got to kind of start planning for in these moments, and so if, if I am perceived as taking the attitude, well, five thousand dollars, it's only five thousand dollars, yeah, but five thousand dollars, when you think about the long term, I mean, it's, it's stuff that matters, so just, just so you know where I'm at a little bit, but...
Well, that's something David should be able to help you with tomorrow, how to do this kind of stuff and not affect that bond ratings.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Are you here for the health department?
No.
All right, that takes us to, uh, staff reports. Derek?
Yes, um, yeah, the retreat's still scheduled for the nineteenth. Um, Janet and I have put in a, a, a good chunk of time already. I think we're, what I've been working on is I basically got an overview of every, every personnel move that I have been involved with, so director hires and, um, mergers and reductions, and just to give you all an idea of what the county has saved there and, and what that allows us to do, working with HR on what the cost of, you know, how much does it cost to give everyone in the organization a three and a half percent raise? So I think we're going to have a lot of good personnel-related data, um, getting a good update from David on Public Works. Nick's given us a good nine-one-one update. Um, I've got Janet working on kind of a five-year history of where our funds have been, so we can kind of see where they're trending. I think we've got a lot of good information that, that we're prepared to give, so I'm excited, I'm, I'm excited for it, and so, uh, if there's anything that you all specifically want to see, please call me, because we, we've still got some time there to add stuff to the list. That's all I have.
Sheriff, you have anything else?
Anything for us?
I got questions. Yeah, it just, if he's information-wise, you, uh, of course, I know you didn't know what nine-one-one, but I know the Sheriff's Association, uh, on the new House bill, that twenty-eighty-four on the nine-one-one fund, you know, I, I got an email yesterday that, that went out of committee and sounded favorable. Do you, do you know any more on that?
This is the one that increases the...
Yeah.
Yes, the fees have been the same for a long time, um, and so this was just a way that they were, and the number, a lot of people have gone away from, used, there were a lot of people had a house phone and a cell phone, so some of those are dropping off, and they were, there was just a mechanism that they wanted to kind of help increase what those funds are for counties, because the costs are going up, um, and I have, I have not read the latest version of that. I know that early on, there was also talk of expanding what that fund could be used for as well, which would also be very beneficial.
And it sounded like that was favorable too with the committee yesterday. It hasn't happened, but, that it could be broaden the, the range of what that money could be used for.
Yes, yes, and, and our association did, did, uh, support that.
I know KC and everybody did.
Yeah.
Thank you.
David?
So Monday and Tuesday, uh, we were dealing with some significant, um, frost boil issues, uh, kind of in various places throughout the county.
I was going to say, what, what parts of the counties did that really impact?
You know, I, I drove around to so many on Monday, I, I couldn't tell you, but I know that they were widespread. Almost all of the blade districts had some issues of some sort. Uh, we dealt with the worst of those first. There were several roads that were impassable, uh, folks were getting stuck, uh, even tractors were getting stuck. And so we've gotten those pretty well taken care of. Uh, the sun Monday afternoon helped a little bit. Something that's going to reoccur whenever things start thawing out, uh, at some point, hopefully, uh, later this year. So we'll, we're on the lookout for that, and today, of course, we're dealing with ice. Uh, we started pre-treating yesterday afternoon, and, uh, they were out again this morning working on that. Uh, so those are kind of the, the heavy things that we're working on in road and bridge, uh, right now. Yesterday, I met with, uh, four of our surrounding counties. Uh, there were a couple others that weren't able to attend for various reasons, partly due to the, the weather. Uh, great information was discussed that will really be beneficial to us moving forward, and we plan to continue getting together as a group, sharing ideas and, and, um, how-to's and, and that sort of thing. It was a couple hours that was very beneficial. And then, uh, related to the chip seal, we'll be bringing that to you later this month, so that we can, uh, have the bid opening in early March. That, uh, kind of came out of that... that we can have the bid opening in early March. That kind of came out of that meeting as far as timing, so that hopefully will help us save a few dollars this next year.
Yeah. Okay, it takes us to.
Hey, Rick, you've got Jody, our treasurer, here to discuss the payment plans for our delinquent property taxes. You guys asked that she come and discuss those plans, so.
I asked her shanny tape for us, and she said no.
No, you asked her if she was.
Asked her the wrong question.
She was mid.
Oh, I asked her on the staff report, so she had anything.
Okay.
Really quickly, Jody, you have in your email box is the information that she's going to discuss, so.
Yep.
And I think by and large, Jody, there were just questions on how the payment plans work, more so than the tax sale, just that that's helpful.
Okay, sure. Okay. The payment plan, that was started quite some time ago. When I started in 98, 18 Zeke had already had that in place. She had gotten together with the county attorney at that time, Larry Wright, and I believe she went before the commission too, to propose this payment plan for people. It originally had treasurer's escrow, where people were paying ahead on their taxes, because it was easier for them to come up with something every month than it was, you know, twice a year to come up with that. And then a treasurer's holding, where people were delinquent and they were, we were holding that money till they had enough to pay out a year. So it was people with, you know, going, had money for the future, people, you know, working up towards it. It got to be that some of the people that were in the escrow started falling behind, and so really, they should have been in the holding. And some of these holding people were the other way around, had extra money, and now, so we just changed the name of escrow. Both of them are escrow. We have A through K and L to Z. That's the only difference. They each have a different fund number, just like the escrow and the holding previous. And that reason why we divide it up anyway is if one of us has taken a payment for somebody in A through K, we can help them instead of waiting for the book, because they're, these are all kept. The monies are receipted in, but we don't do anything on the computer to pay anybody out until they have a full half, if it's a current year, or the full amount on a delinquent year. So we are still holding on to all that money. People are paying interest if they are delinquent, so that there's, you know, on any of these properties, the county is still making interest money on anybody who is delinquent on it. I revise the payment plan agreement. As you see, one is blue and the other one's pink, kind of like your pink slip. Nobody wants a pink slip, so those are the people that are on the tax sale, that are tax sale eligible. That way, we can keep track too, you know, instantaneously. If they bring us the pink one, we know, mm-hmm, we know where they're at with their taxes. And so, pretty much, that's what it is. They come in, if you're tax sale eligible, I have to figure out how much they will have to pay every month. It is strictly every month, whether they're catching up or if they have money in advance. Because my staff have to balance those books every month, and if somebody's not going to do their own due diligence as a taxpayer, I don't want my girls having to go through this when there's not a good outcome coming, you know, from their work to do that. So it does require payments every month. If, just to bring up something about that tax sale, the color coding, the ones in pink were in payments, they didn't follow through. And so, as much as I don't like to do that, they have an agreement they signed, they didn't follow through, so I have to, you know, take them out of the plan.
So when somebody comes to you and says, you know, they're delinquent, they're facing foreclosure, but we want to work with you and make payments, what, you figure that payment, what do you, I mean, obviously, you don't figure a payment just to keep them in re, like, in.
Right.
Delinquency, what do you figure, catch them up?
Each, each of the treasurers before me did a year and a half's worth of taxes in the course of a year. So if someone's payment, or their tax is like $1,000 a year, then they're going to have to pay in the course of a year 1,500 just in tax alone. So we're also using our computer program, thank God we have that, on figuring up the interest, you know, on what it would be for those amounts. And so then, we divide that, that amount by 12 payments, and they have to do that. And even once that oldest year is taken care of, and they're no longer tax sale eligible, they still have to pay that until they're get, until they're current.
So on your list, the, what we still, what we still have are the ones that are in white or pink, because the blue and the green are the ones that are, have been removed now from the list that you had previously given?
The, the ones in the green are payment plan people, yes, that have paid enough for us to take them off this sale. But if they don't follow through, come September, when we finish a tax year, they'll be right back on.
These are all the people just in this coming tax sale that are on, not all the people that.
Right, all the people that are in the payment plan, all of these people. And that is 221 people that make payments to us each month. And like I said, some are just doing it so that instead of having a bank escrow account, they own their home, so they no longer have that ability to have that.
I think our thinking was that just because you're on a payment plan does not keep you, you know, if you're making payments and you haven't paid 2014 taxes, that's not going to keep you off of our list, you know?
Yeah.
It needs to be.
Yes, you need to be consistent.
And the LC properties that we're looking at, have those specials, have specials been removed enough that we're going to be able to sell those at a tax sale, do you feel?
No. I mean, if you just look at the basis of those two printouts from Wade LC that you have there in the emails, most of that is specials, and I sure.
I, I can, I can tell you that I've been involved in some meetings with the city of the Ottawa, and the city of Ottawa is going to handle that. That's not something that we need to worry about. They, they are working that out with their, their legal counsel and, and their bond counsel on what they can do, because those, there are bonds for the, that those specials were intended to pay. So that's not something that, that any of us here at the county have to worry about. The city has conveyed to us that they would like us to move forward, putting this on the tax sale, and they will handle the logistics of what those specials look like. And then they send those over to me when they're ready to remove them, and at the advice of their legal counsel and, and their decertification instructions, and I will remove those off the property, and then they will be able to be sold.
Any other questions about that payment plan?
How's the loop for me? I had a question, I had a direct answer to, I'm sorry. Where, where, I know three years before they can go on the tax sale, right?
Four years.
Four years?
I believe so.
Okay, the, I, okay, now, when is the, once they're on that list, and they've reached their final notice, whatever, when, at what period are they can't come in anymore?
Yeah, that's actually pretty far into the process. And this last tax sale, I mean, we had people redeeming even after the, the sale was filed with the court. So until the judge executes that order of sale, you can still redeem. And, and for some people, and, and, well, I guess, be careful about what I say publicly, because I don't want to give people the wrong ideas, but some people.
In other words, the day of the sale is not totally dead, drop dead, done, on this court out step. You said something, when, when is that period that it's, it's absolutely they can't?
Well, when the judge executes the order, which would come before that.
Before the sale?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, okay, okay. See, I had somebody who's under the impression that they could even the day of the sale, you know, so. And I didn't think that was right.
Well, they can come buy it back. I don't know that that's ever probably happened in the history of.
We did have one, this last one. She made her way to district court first thing in the morning, got to our office, and paid just before that sale.
Okay.
But, yeah.
They had to pay the tax.
There's a point in the process, though, and it depends on what the judge has deemed for dates. But if someone was on the tax sale, and we know it's a viable date already, but they haven't gotten to this stage yet legally, you can pay off one year and get off the tax.
Yeah.
But in that process, there's a point where, everything has to be paid.
Now, okay.
And that depends on.
But if everything, yeah. So they can't use that one-year deal the day of the sale, like they come in that morning, like you said, they had to pay everything.
They had to, yes, they had to go to district court first and pay all of their fees first, then come back with a receipt proving that they had done that, and then we could take every bit of tax.
Have to be paid in full. They can't just pay that one.
Exactly.
That answers my question. Thank you.
And I do think we need to move forward, because if nothing else, you know, we do get a lot paid, just, just people that, you know, are waiting for us to do that, and then, and they'll pay, yeah.
There's a, a certain segment of the population that until they see their name on a pleading in the district court, they're not motivated to pay. But when they get that piece of paper, then the payments come pretty fast. So, so, yeah, we'll, we'll get another one off the ground here.
I just curious.
Do we, when you make these payment plans, do you extend it to just homeowners, to investment properties?
They have to be the owner of the property. It doesn't mean that you have to be living in it.
Could be a rental or.
But you have to, yeah, we got burnt one time. A person, it was a man and a woman, and they didn't, weren't married, and neither one really owned the house. And then they split, and she wanted her part of the money, and he wanted his part of the money. And so then Lisa said, you have, Lisa, previous county counselor had said, you have to be the homeowner of the property. And there's other ones that are grandfathered in that had more than one property in the program, but I only let one, one property going forward here with new people.
So they would have to, is there any way, I mean, if it's an owner-occupied home and they have a mortgage, it would be an escrow, the taxes would?
Not, actually, not all banks and mortgage companies do that anymore. A lot of them have left it to the homeowner, because that way, they don't have to have people in that escrow department, so they're not having to pay their benefits and all that. And then the other part is, you know, some of those companies, banks, mortgage companies, just hire it out. But, yeah, just because somebody's in the payment plan doesn't necessarily mean they don't have a mortgage on it. So, yeah.
What is the, what is the rate we charge as far as interest? I don't know the state sets it.
There's, depending on how much somebody owes, it's 4%, and then it's 10% if you owe $10,000 or more, and that's state, you know, set. So you do, the county does make some good money off interest.
Yeah, but we turn around and borrow money for 4% or more when we do a capital improvement. So, I mean, we're not faking money. We're, if they do happen to pay the 4%, but we turn around and borrow for 4% or more to, to do an HVAC project or anything else, so.
And, you know, it comes down to sometimes that some of these properties only have the value to that person, really, because if they were to try to sell it to somebody else, they're probably not going to get what they would feel is, is worth.
Well, it scares me that we're, I mean, essentially in the business of loaning money to 200 people. We don't have policies for that. I mean, it's kind of, well, Lisa said we should do it this way. You have an opinion, no, one per person. I'm scared that we're going to be accused of arbitrarily, you know, saying, yeah, we can do it for you, no, not for you. Do you live there? You know, find out that somebody didn't live there? I mean.
Well, it's not that they live there, they, they own that property. So, but they don't have to necessarily live in it.
But that we didn't extend the same courtesy to everyone equally, because we don't have policies, we don't have checks. I mean, we're working with people, which is fine, but it's just not the business we're in. And I think maybe we want to think seriously about a cutoff date and not accept any more, let the other ones age out of the program and not deal with essentially lending money to people.
Well, I can say that we're not the only county that does this. There are a lot of counties.
Understand we're not, I'm just sure it's not a good thing.
It's even built into our software program that you can have an escrow payment plan that way.
Yep, not, not, not speaking as to whether we're the only one, but I'm just not sure it's a wise thing for us to be in.
Right.
And I'm not saying we pull the rug under people who are already in that program, but maybe we, we don't do this anymore. We set a cutoff date, and I'm just not sure it's a, for what it probably, well, it's our financial liability. Like I said, we're turning around borrowing money for an equal or greater amount.
Mm-hmm.
And then just the risk and that it, liability that it, I think, would expose.
This is 200 people compared to tons of thousands too, that are out there, you know?
It's kind of a service that we provide more than anything else.
Exactly, exactly.
And I, I don't see that that's harmful, but it's a discussion we can have, probably not.
Like I said, we each have an opinion and, you know, they're, you know.
I can see, like, the cold, you know, I could see the bad point. I see the good point too. I know a gentleman owned a business here in town, and that's the only way he kept his doors open, and he employed eight people. So if he goes down, sales tax he was collecting goes, eight people are out of a job. I mean, you know, and not everybody falls under that category, but that's just, one of them can be one of those kind of people.
Jody, who, who set the four-year delinquent for, goes on sale?
That's the state.
State did that.
Yeah, state statutes, mm-hmm. And so, like I said, September is always the deciding factor, because we end one tax year and start another one in October. That's why the treasurers have such an unusual time that they take offices. They finish up a tax year, and then the new treasurer takes over in, in October. And so September is a deciding line. So these people that, you know, I've marked off here, if they don't follow through, then come September, the 2015 taxes put them back on the list. And some of them know the system, you know, not necessarily payment people either, just some of the people know the system. And it's an unusual way to what they call save money, but, you know.
Out of curiosity, are there people that owe multiple properties on the tax sale list? Are there?
Um, yes.
So there's maybe landlords or, yeah.
And.
Wade LC owns like 45 of them.
Yeah.
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 And I know there are people that do that. They just wait.
Yeah, I don't understand their thinking, but, you know.
One thing that I will say, and I commend Jody for, she's being a good sport and entertaining the discussion, but we are talking about a statutory duty of the treasurer. And so this is within her authority to do this. It's no different than, you know, Janet and how she runs elections. That's not really the board's purview to, I would love to have the conversation and encourage the dialogue between the entities, but I, I do want the board to know that, you know, push comes to shove, this is something that she is tasked with doing under Kansas law. And so, that being said, so.
And we appreciate you and what you do, and I wouldn't want to do it in a million years, so.
Well, thank you, thank you.
Jody, would it be better if they shortened that time, not let it go four years before?
Well, and there's different categories too, if it's a commercial, and, you know, it's, I believe it's sooner if it's commercial property.
Yeah.
I think it's a year less.
How many went to the tax sale last time?
Because you were over four years then, weren't you? That was why, there was so many. I think we need to stay on top of it now that, now that we've got caught up, let's just.
And unfortunately, on that last tax sale, those, some of those properties had been sold on a previous tax sale, and the new person didn't follow through either. And, you know, it happens.
I don't know if, is there, I mean, I think it's a good discussion to have. Is there, you know, I'm trying to, I mean, are you willing to consider, I guess, looking at the pay plan and maybe trying to establish a, a set of policies? I mean, that's something that I could work with you on, just so that it's kind of clear-cut.
Absolutely. Yeah, I'd be, I'd be fine with that.
I understand that Jody has the autonomy to enter into these herself and do this, but my position here. But my position here, I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't voice a concern about.
Yeah, sure.
The liability of the county, the financial, I don't think it's good for the county financially to enter into these. I don't really believe it's a service that it's far cheaper to pay your taxes than it is to go on a payment plan, recur interest and try, I mean, even cash flow wise, one year is far less than one and a half years plus interest. I mean,
Absolutely.
I don't believe we're doing them. It's a great deal. We're not helping people. You're four years late anyways.
Well, we, we do have people that previously had been tax sale eligible that have put their nose to the grindstone and made sure that they got, uh, you know, with the program and now they are paying ahead.
Sure, I don't, I guess I don't believe this is the only, if you're able to catch up that much tax to get off the, you have re, income, you have revenue, you have probably the ability to borrow money, you have an asset, something we're saving like that. I mean, there are businesses on the private side that will do this. We don't, I don't think we need to be in that business and introduce the liability, the extra work for our people, the, all those things. It is a service. I don't think it's the only place they can get that service though.
I would be willing to, you know, talk with you Derek on, you know, legalities and things like that. That's not an issue.
Yeah, and I think, and I don't know that we have to do it today, but.
Well, and for every person that's behind, that's on our, that is making payments, you have, and seniors, you know, people that are on fixed income, they own their house, you know, this taxes, I mean, I, I really true feel like that is a service and four percent interest is, you know, to go to a bank and do that every year to do tax, I, I really feel like it's not, yeah, it's, it, it, it's not a bad thing.
Mm-hmm.
For most people, I mean, some people are going to be use the system, but for most people, the, out of the, the list of people that you are helping, you know, most of them are current and it's just to help them to be able to budget that monthly payment. But anyway, yeah, it's a discussion pod for another day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rick, before you go to board reports, let's circle back around to the health departments. Um, I think I can walk us through that. We discussed this. This probably should have been a consent agenda item, frankly. We discussed this.
That's why she mentioned here.
Yeah, we discussed this at the board of health meeting. Um, you've got the report attached. Basically, we just need a motion to approve write-offs in the amount of one thousand seven hundred fourteen dollars and seventy-five cents. Her fourth quarter revenues were great, um, due to the influenza vaccination, so that's not uncommon this time of year to have good revenue. So, um, if one of you want to give that motion, we can knock this item off.
Revenue's go up, write-offs go up. I'd be happy to make a motion to approve write-offs for the health department, uh, for their fourth quarter, uh, finances in two thousand eighteen, the amount of seventeen hundred fourteen dollars and seventy-five cents.
And I would second that.
Commissioner Dunn?
Seventeen hundred, Dan?
Yes.
In the report.
I'm saying the fourteen hundred, yeah.
Specific action request?
Yep, one thousand seven hundred fourteen dollars and seventy-five cents.
You getting a different number out of the report itself?
Yeah, it was fourteen and a half. Okay. You have a motion and a second, yeah, for that one.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks, Commissioner comments, the board reports. Don, you want to start?
Uh, yeah, I attended Wellsville City Meeting last week. Uh, main topic up there was, uh, uh, funding and, and getting ready to extend, uh, lift stations and sewer lines across thirty-three highway. Uh, the, the new steel plant up there, concrete done and they're, they're erecting the steel now. It's pretty well done. So it'll look for it to be in operation too many months down the road. Uh, and it also is going to provide, uh, water and sewer to the new truck stop. It hasn't started yet, but I hear they're going to immediately, as soon as they weather permitting and things that they're wanting to move forward with that right away because they do have big contract with Cabota up there and they wanting to get things to moving. Uh, I went to the Rand Tool City Meeting. Uh, they're down there trying to improve, uh, uh, their lines are pretty old down there, so they took it on theirself, not KDHE, to do better testing for asbestos in the water. And they're taking it on, not because they've been warned by anybody, they just feel it theirself. Their lines are old. I think, I wasn't very old when they put them lines in, so he tells you how old them lines probably are. And, but they're taking it on theirself to, to, to do testing. I think the city people are impressed that they're doing it without having to be asked. They're thinking about them, you know? Uh, there's just several other little things, but they're, they always have a, uh, city fireworks that the city puts on and pays for every year. They always have it the Saturday before the fourth. It's on June the twenty-ninth this year. Uh, anybody's never been to their fireworks? I tell you, they're, they're really good. They're as good as you'll find in any big town, uh, around. I had, uh, Roy, I'm Roy, part of our membership now, we had our RCND meeting here yesterday. We had Heather Morgan, which is doing our grant on the Strategic Economic Community Development Grant. You go to Project Seventeen now. Our website is, is tied right in to Project Seventeen's website now. It has all the projects and the product, that we are working with them on the Project Seventeen and, uh, all the entities that we've helped and websites and, and she wants to know anybody that has a small business or whatever, uh, that want their website done or updated, she'll do it at no cost. I mean, to a small business that's wanting to, you know, put in, uh, their, whatever they grow or, or make or whatever in small communities in the Seventeen County area. Uh, main other thing, I did give a report on, uh, that small energy program that we're being part of with, uh, K, K-State. And right now we have three businesses in Coffee County, which we represent six counties, but it's hubbed out Ottawa. We're working with three businesses down there to help them get free, uh, energy assessments on there from K-State. Uh, and like Brandon mentioned, he's right, that mainly that is for energy efficient. But if you had even a big building here, it's a, but I think we're in pretty good shape, energy efficient here. Uh, hundreds feeding the hungry, we've already delivered three thousand pounds of meat this year. Uh, we're talking about, I got contacted by, uh, State Forestry Department. Several years ago, when I first started on RCND, we did a statewide master fire plan. We did it for each county in the state of Kansas. It was like a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant we worked with. And they're asking us to go back and possibly revise this, not rewrite the book, but just to go through and meet with each county and, uh, firefighters association and so forth and, because it has a lot of inventory stuff in, just like we had to redo the plan for the solid waste authority. Tell the same people, same stuff, you just have to update it every, so this doesn't have to be, but if they want to pay us to, to go around there and do that, which we've done it, I guess, because we had done it before years ago, we're going to take that on. The board agreed to do that. Uh, a lot of small stuff, I'm, uh, just to, uh, appreciate the county allowing us to continue to use this room. It's a very valuable thing, uh, to be, and, and we have several commissioners that serve on our board. And I guess that's a chance to meet with them every once in a while, what's going on in your county with, I know Lynn County's in the process of building a new jail. Kind of nice to hear from them, different things that, what they're running into and, and what's going on. And, and I was able to introduce, uh, David to the commissioners from a couple of other counties that, that he knew them and they knew him. And it's always, and I appreciate, now, there one more thing. Our Brandon and, and Derek on our tour the other day, I think that's a very big, instead of us just walking in here and him telling us what the problem is, letting us see what the problem is. And it makes it easier for him too, when, when he's trying to promote what he needs to be done and we see what needs to be done. I'm done.
I went to Food Policy Council meeting Monday. Um, probably the most notable item was that they are assisting with starting a food pantry at, uh, Central Heights.
Hey, I went to, uh, RCND council meeting with Don and he, he did, uh, a lot of the highlights there. One thing that Heather brought up, uh, was Fort Scott losing their hospital. Hospital closed and ambulance service too closed down, uh, down there at Fort Scott, so they're scrambling to get any kind of, uh, emergency type, uh, care and hospital care down that area. One other thing she brought, it was that Elk County, half the county's, uh, cell phone provider pulled out, took all their equipment off their tower, so if you didn't have a landline, uh, half the county couldn't communicate with anybody else, down in Elk County, so, uh, makes us look a lot, a lot better in this county and what services we have here. And she also mentioned some of the small grocery stores were closing because, uh, the big, uh, suppliers were requiring ten thousand dollars worth of, uh, product a week to, uh, just come and deliver supplies to a grocery store. And a lot of those small communities, the small grocery stores, uh, can't afford that kind of, uh, commitment, so. Uh, it's kind of, kind of appreciate where we are right now in this county.
When they made years that they, uh, moved that, that hospital out there and built that new hospital, that's been very many years ago. Wow.
Wednesday night I attended the city of Ottawa commission meeting. Um, it, some of the highlights, they continued their funding agreements with Prairie Paws, with Willow Domestic Center, with Elizabeth Leighton Center, with FCDC. They did not extend that agreement to Main Street. Um, for some, they need, wanted some additional information from them. Uh, Blake Jorgensen was elected mayor and Tom Wigan was elected mayor pro tem. On Thursday, several of us attended the Franklin County Conservation District annual meeting. And the more I learned about that agency, the more I appreciate what they do for our farming community. Um, on, um, Monday, I attended the study session of the city commission where they are, are going to do just a half year for Main Street at this point and it requires some additional, um, doc, I think that they just want some review of their audit, some audit, review of their funding. And then on Monday evening, I attended the Princeton City Council meeting. A couple of their main things that they're still, they're working on is a playground next to the, um, city building that they have some, uh, grant money for, that they're going to match. And then, uh, some upgrades to the, they get some township money, so, for their city hall or for their, uh, community building that they are, uh, working on. But anyway, those are the highlights.
Does their community building act as their city hall?
No, it does not.
Okay.
There's a little, there's a little building next to the post office.
Okay.
That they use, that's as their city hall.
Okay, uh, yesterday morning I attended the FCDC executive board meeting. Um, talked about the strategic plan committees, updates, um, talked a little bit about the search for a new, uh, director. Interviews will start, uh, Friday. I think we have three Friday morning and one the following Mondays. I believe there's four that's going, total that's going to be interviewed. So that was yesterday morning. Monday night I went to the Winsburg City Council. It was business as usual, talked about, um, their library ordinance, talking about changing the water, uh, rate, how much, uh, it's going to cost everybody for water. And like everybody else, talked about their streets and ditches and what to do about their streets. They definitely seen the, uh, result of the, the cold weather, a lot of chuckles and so forth. And then they went into a new executive session for personnel matters. Last, uh, Tuesday to Tuesday before, attended the Franklin County Tourism Committee. They had Michael Davidson from Explorer Lawrence. He's one of us involved in their transient guest tax. He came down and talked to us about, uh, transient guest tax and a grant program that they have for that and how that works. And, uh, what they do with the rest of their money, they take in well over, uh, a million dollars a year in transient guest tax. So they have quite a bit to, to deal with up there when it comes to that. And I think, uh, I also attended, uh, and you'll meet another Franklin County. Conservation the other day, and, uh, what else did we go to? The Friday Forum. We were all at the Friday Forum and listened to Janet present her, uh, speech, so. I hope she saves some of that speech for COFO tomorrow and other than that, I think that's the last thing, I think that's the last thing I bid to, so.
Oh, I did also forget, I was at the Chamber coffee for, uh, Rock, the, it used to be ORV and now it's Rock, Rock Creek. And that, you know, it's exciting to see a company come in that feels like they're going to come in and they can make improvements to. I mean, that's a service that as our, our population ages, we're going to need more and more, not less and less, that we want to have a quality organization that's providing.
Okay, upcoming events we have, that I see is, uh, the thirteenth, we have a commission meeting. And the eighteenth, the offices will be closed. Anything else, anybody else?
Yeah, Mr. Smith, uh, you remind me on the con, the president of the conservation, said they, they meet on the first Thursday of the month, eight-thirty in the morning. I'm tended on going out there. I hadn't been to one of their meetings in years, so. Just get an idea of where they're at and where they're going. I'm going to go attend their meeting tomorrow.
Okay, if nothing else, I would look for a motion to adjourn. Have a motions or a second, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Closed, or adjourned?